You ready? We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is 10:08, June 8th, 2022. All three county commissioners are here. I apologize, we're having a little problem with the recording, but we are recording it through our work session cameras. And that will be, can we put that on? That will be available at a later date. So we'll move forward. Consent and approval?
We have four honorations, plus $594.40. Minutes for June 1st, 2022. Dr. Kevin Perry, $27,762.97.
$1,694.78, 24 cents. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, $17,625.57. 911, $2,003.06. Chestnut Ridge Park, $3.96.24. Camp Muffley, $92.85. Mason Dixon Park, $204.16. Mon County Center, $976.53. Assessor's valuation, $2,764.40. For a voucher total of $1,990,968.87. No budget revisions. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary orders for June 8th, 2022.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Pop, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any special fiduciary orders? Seeing none. We'll move to introduction of new employees, personnel changes. And we have Sheriff Perry Palmer?
It's just a transfer.
Okay.
We've got Shelby Crocker from part-time processing transport officer to full-time processing transport officer. Rate of pay will be $2,006.82, 20 per month. And that's effective June 1st.
Move to approve the transfer as requested?
Second.
Pop, please move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes, it's great.
We also have two additional submissions from Camp Muffley. We've got Grayson Fromback, part-time seasonal lifeguard without benefits at $10 an hour. Today is his start date. And then we also have Angel Trinity Santos, part-time seasonal cook without benefits. Rate of pay is $9 an hour, also today's start date.
Move to approve the employees as presented?
Second.
Pop, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Great. At this time, we will have comments from the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none? That's quick. We have grants. Colleen Coon. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, Kelly.
Hi. Okay. So for you today to sign, I have the grant contract for the day reports for the community corrections grant. We've been awarded $190,000 for that. So I have the resolution that county clerk needs to sign. And it reads, "The Montague County Commission met on Wednesday, June 8th, 2022, with the quorum present and passed the following resolution. It resolved that the Montague County Commission hereby authorizes the Honorable Thomas C. Bloom, President of the Montague County Commission, to act on its behalf to enter into a contractual agreement with the Division of Administrative Services, Justice and Community Services section to receive and administer grant funds pursuant to provisions of the West Virginia Community Corrections Grant Program." So you'll have the grant contract that you need to sign, the standard conditions and assurances, the special conditions and assurances, certifications regarding lobbying. There are two equal employment opportunity plan requirements that you will also have to sign, a HIPAA business associates agreement, schedule of payments, which we receive quarterly payments in the amount of $47,500. And then the requests for funds for those payments.
Move to approve the grant documents as presented?
Second.
Pop, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do I need to sign my firstborn weight? Secondborn? Yeah, that's okay then. Okay, thank you. Sheriff Perry Palmer and the presentation of the 2021 delinquent tax list. And...
Good morning.
Good morning. How big is the list? Okay. Ah, I can start doing weights. Thank you. Oh, good. I appreciate it. This is the... As I was saying, this is the cheat sheet last sheet that I appreciate. Okay.
So we are here to present you with the delinquent real estate and personal property taxes 2021. And we ask the commission to certify the list of the county clerk to be recorded. And if you have any questions? We have information we just gave you and Kelly can answer.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the list and then we can have conversation.
Sure.
Okay. I'll move to approve the 2021 delinquent list as presented?
Second.
Do we have discussion?
Yeah, Kelly, do you want to, the information you provided, do you want to kind of, for the public, kind of summarize the difference between this year and last year and what the total delinquent percentages are?
Absolutely. So real estate for this year is $3,232,999.25. The personal property delinquent amount is $2,164,250.41 for a total delinquency of $5,397,249.66, which is about 5% of the taxes that are uncollected, which is, has been the trend for the last three years. We had some, the reason that 2017 and 18, we had those, those private...
Public-private partnerships.
Public-private partnerships that were included then that were taken off the books. So we're running at about 5%, which is about the norm. The one thing I did want to mention is that for the delinquent real estate, that the process will be different, beginning June the 12th. This year, the legislature passed Senate Bill 552, which changes the delinquent tax process. There will no longer be a tax sale held by the sheriff in November. At that time, everything will be certified to the auditor's office for redemption through them. So I've actually requested a work session, you know, so that we could sit down and discuss that. And I know the assessor's office and the county clerk's office would like to be a part of that as well because it affects their office and how we process the delinquent taxes. So there really will no longer be liens. The property will actually be sold.
Is there a new time limit?
There's a new time limit and it won't be until March or April of the following year. So, but it does go into place June 12th. So there won't be a tax sale this year. So, but we'll just, we can discuss all that. So I just caution the public that are used to the process of delinquent taxes. It will be, it will be much different for them this year.
They won't have the 18 months.
They won't have the 18 months to redeem anymore.
Right. And that's the important thing you need to get that.
It's more like eight months.
Because that's the big change.
Yes. Yeah.
And just to be clear, looking back across this last five years, the number, the total number this year, though our percentage of delinquent taxes is about 5.09 compared to 5.06 from last year, the number is actually down by $3,000, the total amount. So in, it represents the lowest number in the past five years. So those numbers, the total numbers, dollars...
Right.
Are still down slightly. So we're able to maintain that, you know, it's actually decreased since, every year since 2017.
Right. And the real estate will collect?
Will collect. Yes.
We will collect in full.
Okay, right. That's what I thought. I knew it was one.
Right.
That was, yeah. That was the other point I wanted to make is these aren't, these aren't write-offs. These are taxes that will be collected.
Right. These are just late. These are just late payments.
Yes.
And then, yeah, the personal property, I believe we collect all but like 1% or something like that. So we're pretty good about that as well. Okay?
Okay. It's properly moved in second. All those in favor to accept the delinquent tax list, say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Correspondence. Announcement of the Mon County Adult and Workforce Retrainings Scholarship Program for your community foundation.
We met with your community foundation in work session last week about another topic. And they presented this flyer to us. It's a program that they, it says Montague County, but it is not a county commission program. So this is through the YCF. They got an endowment from somebody, from somebody in the public. And they've, these are scholarships that are available for people to do trade, technical and certificate programs for those that have had significant work disruptions while employed within Montague County, beginning March 2020 through now. So we're going to have a link on our website so that people can go to our website or you can go to your community foundation, your community foundation website directly.
Any other correspondence?
I only had one other item. We got a press release. I think, I believe I got this from the Morgantown Area Partnership regarding, and I'm gonna probably butcher this, N-Bio. It's a production, insulin production facility that's coming to Montague County. It was, I guess they signed an MOU with the State Economic Development Office. I don't know if you guys want to expand on this. I assume you all saw it.
Yeah.
Correct, yes. When we got it, it was embargoed until they actually released it. So I believe it's under, it's been released. But this is an entity that's going to manufacture insulin.
Insulin.
So and they're looking, they're looking to come to Mon County, so.
That is, oh.
South Korean?
I'm sorry. One other.
I believe, yes.
Yeah, South Korean.
One other item. Botanical Garden Levy Report for the third quarter that ended March 31st.
Okay. Great. Anyone else have any correspondence?
No.
Any unfinished business?
No.
Any new business? Consideration approved, a revision to requisition number three for Series 2021B Harmony Grove Phase One Project Fund, previous approved on June 1st, 2022.
The new requisition amount, it's slightly higher. New requisition amount is $563,814.97.
Yeah. Move to approve amended requisition number three as presented?
Second.
Pop, move in second as amended?
There were two charges that were left off that.
Okay.
There were two charges.
So that's why it was amended.
Additional one for EnRoute and additional one for, I'm sorry, additional one for Preston Contractors for the EnRoute road expansion and additional one for MVB Bank for the contract construction interest, so anyhow.
Okay. From pop, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Consideration to accept the presentation of 2022 land and personal property books and requests for commissioner's signatures on oath and certificates by Mark Music, Assessor of Mon County.
This is, I mean, it's self-explanatory.
Self-explanatory.
Certificate forms.
Move to approve the 2022 land and personal property books by signing oath and certificates as presented by Montague County Assessor, Mark Music.
Second.
Pop, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration approved request by Honestville Community Association for funding from the county commission, community billing expense account for several plumbing upgrades.
I move that we approve the funding request in the amount of $5,000 as requested.
Second.
Pop, move in second. And just for clarification, that the public knows, we have a line item, which is community billing expenses that we take it out of. So it's, pop, move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
One other thing they had to request. Their, their full request was about $5,300, but they had, we, we approved $5,000, which is what they requested, but they did show expenses.
Okay.
Up to like $5,300, so.
Okay. To consider for approval, letter of engagement for Steptoe &amp; Johnson, PLLC, to represent the Mon County Commission in connection with the negotiation draft, approval, execution and delivery of a lease agreement by and between the county commission and EnRoute LLC regarding the Mecca 911 facility to be constructed by EnRoute within the Morgantown Industrial Park.
Move to approve the letter of engagement as presented?
Second.
Pop, move in second. Any discussion or it's really self-explanatory?
Yeah. This is the, our legal counsel will be doing the due diligence to draft the actual documents and kind of work out all the financial, possible financial arrangements of that transaction.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Passes. Do we have any other thing else? Okay. Reports from elected officials. And we are honored today to have Delegate Statler, who makes a mean pig roast.
Well, thank you very much. I'm happy to be here and I want to personally thank you. A couple of notes that I have today. I will thank the commission on behalf of President Blair and Speaker Hanschel. The reception that legislators received in Montague County during the late, the prayer legislative interims was beyond reproach. I told Commissioner Bloom that I've already heard from the Morgan County that they've already approached the county commission over there because we will have, I believe it's our November, and interims will be at Capen. And that they've already went to the county commission informing them that they'd have a pretty high hill to climb in order to accomplish what you accomplished. I can't say it any better than the reception. It went off great. I could start thanking a lot of people because everybody was involved, but I forget some. But I do want to make mention, since Sheriff Palmer's here, his, his group that was up there was very much appreciated. Wasn't needed and that's fortunate that we didn't need them. But at the same time, it made people feel ease that they were in that type of a setting. When you go into another area that you don't know what the political climate is, they felt very much at ease in that climate that we had up there. And I just can't say enough about basically the whole experience that was shown in the meetings that took place, you know, all around the city, the university and how they rolled out the red carpet. It just went great for us. So I think that I believe part of what you wanted to do was showcase Montague County. I know that was a major part, even on when you had the desserts in that one room and had the group back in there. I received a lot of compliments on that and especially on the desserts. Everybody really liked those. So without anything, I would tell you that I was 100% or more thrilled with the way that the reception and the interims went off in Montague County. No complaints from anybody and usually even staff. The people worked with the staff to make sure that the needs and, and you know, that when you bring that many people from out of town in or something that they forgot or need, it's no different when we go to Charleston. The staff is always there to take care of it and they was met with the welcome arms to take care of that. On the other note, I just wanted to say to you that I'm meeting tomorrow with my vice chairman of fire and EMS. We're going to have a meeting basically with AT&amp;T that we're looking at the emergency services and the communication systems across the state. We've got some, some minor issues that we're working on. And being a border county, one of them is that when ambulances and stuff comes in from another county into Montague County or the state of West Virginia, they're not able to access the emergency systems. They have to go another route in order to get in, you know what I'm saying, on the communications. So we're looking at that to see what we can do to correct that because bordering counties, we need to be able to communicate that with the emergency services that's coming across to deliver to the hospitals or take from out of the hospitals. That's one thing of it. We also want to look at what you guys are doing. And I commend you on that, on the broadband and what's going on out there. We want to look at what the next generation of communications should be with first responders, with everything. As you know, you just put the tower up, back up out on Catherine's Knob. And my understanding is across the state, you guys initially found it and corrected it early on. But my understanding is this is a problem across the state because of the towers and the guy wires and that type of thing. It's an inherent problem. So we're seeing some of those systems fail across the state. So we want to start digging into this and seeing if there's another system that could possibly work better. And I'm sure Sheriff Palmer probably knows better than I about the communications. And, and the one thing that AT&amp;T was telling me, and it's not that it's AT&amp;T or whoever, I could care less who delivers. But they have a system so that if an emergency happens like did on 911, that there are priority phones out there and systems that will get priority above everybody else. So as you know, I'm sure even in, and I hate to mention it, but the school shootings and that type of thing, you know that those systems goes crazy. We see it at WVU when they have football games and what, but there is a system out there that gives priority phones, the communications, and they can continue to go right on. It will override the others. So these are just some of the things that we're looking at at some point in time. And I talked to Commissioner Sikora about it. We plan on certainly bringing in Fortney and Jimmy Smith into it because some of the questions I'd ask him about the new 911 center, what the technology will be. So I will let you know if anything comes up. There's no action going to be taken. We're just trying to dig into this a little bit and see what we need to do. And we'll try and remedy that small one to start off with, the ambulance coming in. I think that's going to be like a $300,000 request that will be out there. And, and I'm thinking we may be able to handle that through that emergency money that the governor gave to us so that we can make this system work a little bit better. Don't know that for sure, but we're in the early processes of it. So again, my main thing is, thank you guys for making the legislator feel welcome in Montague County.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you, Joe.
Any other speakers? Reports from county commissioners? Sean?
Since the last meeting, last Thursday, I had an extension positions interview and that went really well. I was actually glad to participate to understand what that position is going to bring. It's a, it's an empty position. It's been empty for a long time. So it's family resources that are going to now be additionally added to the support that extension office provides. And we had great candidates. So we did, I don't know where we are in the offer process, but we did identify, zero in on our, our selection. And because it's a county position, Becca's going to be working with you as far as how that, working, working that person through till the end. After that, I had the Fiber Connect Conference. I'm going to a conference, I've been asked to participate in a conference this weekend in Nashville, Fiber Connect 2022. It's a national event and I've been asked to go there and speak on two different panels in regards to what we're doing in Mon County. So I had a tag up with the group in regards to our community assessment panel that I'm going to sit on. Friday, we had staff reports. And then, Joe, I had a meeting with Lit Communities about that same, very same subject matter. Had a meeting with our consultant Lit Communities and a wireless company that's going to do the promulgation study for the, for the county for when we put in our first ring, our first broadband ring. And we had discussed Next Gen 911 because there's a higher level study we could do at this time. But I want to make sure that, one, that's very important and we're having that discussion and we're actually looking at what we need to do to make sure that that system's capable. But the, the, the main requirement is having those fiber backbones that, that we're, so we're moving forward. We're not, we, but we're already having those conversations about studies that we're going to be doing a year or two from now about Next Gen 911. I had to make sure that we stayed focused on broadbands first. As we go that and as we provide that infrastructure, we'll be able to, that's already three steps that will be checked off for Next Gen 911 as that system evolves and the needs for that system evolves. And of course, in Mon County, we're, I'm sure we're going to lead the state in, in having a next generation 911 system. Saturday, I had a breakfast meeting with the local group at the local Shoneys. Monday, I had a lunch meeting with the constituent. And then I had the extension committee meeting where we hired, or had, the committee had to make a hiring decision for the extension agent. There's two different individuals. One's being hired through the extension and W and the other is the employee that we're hiring. So we're a great candidate. I've, once she gets her feet on the ground, I would like her to come and meet with us just so we understand again, a lot of the capabilities that's being added to the extension office in service of the citizens of this community. After that, I actually had my first softball game on Monday. So softball season's back. Tuesday, I had our regular monthly breakfast with Delegate Statler, Ron Lidle and former superintendent Devano. That's something that we've been doing for a couple of years and we've continued to. It's always a, it's a good way to get kind of caught up on other things that are going mainly in the education world. Conversation, all these kinds of veers towards education and what's going on in the state. So it's at least a good opportunity to know, understand. Today's a regular day. Tonight is Mountaineer, what do they call it? Visit Mountaineer Country CVV Day at the ballpark. So the, I believe, Jeff, I don't know if you'll be...
Planning commission meeting, I'll be out instead.
Oh, sorry. You can stay there.
So Commissioner Bloom and I will be attending. Tomorrow I have, tomorrow's a busy day. Partnership Executive Committee meeting in the morning. Red Team meeting after that. Development Authority meeting after that. And then I have my other Fiber Connect Panel prep discussion for, and that discussion is broadband and public-private partnerships and how the, how they can work together. In the evening, we have a reception for the stakeholders for, that have been instrumental in bringing, bringing about the Mount Top Beverage Project. And we actually, Commissioner Bloom and I also got a request late, if, if we can, later in the day to go watch a demonstration out at the Aquatic Center. There's a U.S. Navy contractor that's using our diving well to do testing on submersible vehicles. So if we get a chance to go out...
Yeah, it sounds pretty cool.
If we get a chance to go out, I'm going to go out and watch that. Friday, we have staff reports. And then we have longer awaited Muffley Grand Pool opening. So looking forward to that pool grand opening. Then I, then I'll be leaving for Nashville. So I'll be in Nashville for the weekend. So in general, Delegate Statler, thank you for all you do. Keep me posted on the next generation 911 stuff because, you know, again, that kind of goes hand in hand with what we're, what we're doing across the community. And I look forward to hearing about, hearing about that process. One other thing that I mentioned last week that I had a capabilities briefing, that me and a few members of the Development Authority had a capabilities briefing with a local company. That was kind of a high water mark as far as where the development, Development Authority has come over the past few years is now we're at a point where we're actually seeking out economic development. Before, we were just kind of dealing with what came to us. Now we're actually seeking out economic development and things that can work, work for our community. I had a follow-up call or discussion on Sunday with the individual we met with and they had secured a $5 million grant to put this concept plant in a southern, in a southern county. But we're, the technology that's being developed is here. And it could be a, I mean, this, this phrase is used a lot for a lot of things we do, but it, it really could be a game changer for the coal industry. So again, all starting here in Mon County. We're looking to, you know, obviously, we hope that Mon County will benefit from one or two of those plants too. But these are things that the development, true development authority should be doing to kind of be proactive and not reactive. So a lot of interesting, a lot of interesting developments to come. That's all I have.
All right, it's good.
Couple of things just to thank you to Sheriff Palmer and Chief Deputy Ralston. I had an issue at my office complex last week, made a call. Whole thing was resolved very quickly, very responsive. Whole thing was resolved very quickly, very responsive. I thank you for that. Wanted to thank Russ Rogerson and the folks at the Morgantown Area Partnership. This press release we mentioned earlier about the insulin manufacturer, that does... Those kind of things don't just fall out of the sky. That could be huge for Mon County if it comes to fruition. And Russ has been working with WVU to try to recruit this group to town, and it looks very promising. So, that... The work that Russ continues to do with the partnership is really beneficial to the county, and we really thank him for his efforts. And as Sean mentioned, the Muffley Pool is actually open today for general admission, so please go out and take a look and see what's going on. The grand openings this weekend, but we're kind of the soft open today, I guess. And I had an opportunity to go out there this weekend, and the park looks absolutely beautiful. The staff out there, JR Petsko and Amy... I'm blanking on her last name.
Headic.
Yes. Headic. I was thinking Hedrick, but Headic is... Our superintendent had really spruced the park up. It looks beautiful. The place was packed. Every pavilion was being used. There was a wedding going on, and it's really a gem. So, if you get an opportunity this summer to go on out to Muffley, please do because they'd love to have you. That's all I got.
Thank you. As you know, I'm on Facebook, and when I see something about one of our camps...
[laughter]
One of our camps, I get worried.
When'd you join?
Yes. Just last week. And it was wonderful. Someone had a wedding at a Camp Muffley, and they couldn't... First of the week, it was beautiful. They couldn't say enough about it, and then all these people were saying, well, how do I get more information and so on? And it was just really great to see such a positive. And then, I ran into a couple Morgantown High volleyball players, and they said, do you know that they have a sand volleyball that... And they loved it because there's nowhere in the county. So, that's become a real big growing, and they already have eight teams, and they're doubling it. So, it's really great to see our camps doing so well. Along those lines, also, I heard Jennifer Lenhart... Lenhart, right? Mm-hmm. From Myland Park Pools, I guess, Director Pools, on the radio talking about the Mon County micro... Micro... The mini swimmers program. And it was great because one of the things people didn't understand was not only do we have a lot of kids signing up, but we have a lot of parents signing up who have never learned how to swim. And I just think right there, it really... We're doing the right thing, so I'm really excited about that. I spent the last 72 hours working with the board. I'm on the Hope Hill Sobering Center Board. We're close to the opening it. We have some problems that we need to make a decision on, and hopefully next week we'll have a better idea. But we are moving forward on that. We're close to the end zone, and hopefully we can get that open in the very near future. But we have to make some very difficult decisions now. We have no problem with the facility. It's ready to go. It's now actually having people to actually run it and a plan. And finally, yet, Joe, I want to thank you. I mean, first of all, it's not normal or usual that a Jewish guy goes to a Hager, and it was amazing because I didn't even have it. I blessed it kosher to make sure it was okay. But it was just such the event, the positivity. And because of that, I haven't told my fellow commissioners, but I got a call through Scott Rowtruck, who they are having a statewide panel on... Hold on. Tomorrow from 10:30, 11:30 to discuss the property tax modernization amendment.